I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, call the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Betsinger.
Here. All right, we're all here this evening. Thank you everybody for coming. We have a packed agenda for the start of the meeting here, so without any further comments, I would like to move into the first item, which is the swearing in of our newly elected village trustees and village clerk. So with that, with us this evening, we have Judge McAdams from Kendall County, who I don't mean to put you on the spot, but 10 years ago, you were in this room to swear me in for the first time. The only way that I know that is that my kids, I could hold them then, and now I cannot. So I appreciate you coming back to us again and swearing in our newly elected officials. So who wants to go first? Let's do the village clerk first. Debbie Buchanan, I'd like to do her first full term, correct?
This is a two-year term.
A two-year term, so first half-term. All right. Judge, if you want to come up. Where Christina says to do it, over there? Because they're taking pictures and I'm not.
And I have...
Can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Debbie Buchanan, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village clerk to the best of my ability.
All right. Next up, in alphabetical order, trustee Guyer.
Can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Devin Guyer, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee to the best of my ability.
All right, next up, in alphabetical order, trustee Guyer.
Can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Devin Guyer, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee to the best of my ability.
All right, next up, in alphabetical order, trustee Guyer.
Can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Devin Guyer, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee to the best of my ability.
No, I will, I'll call you. And last up, Doug Marisak. Congrats.
Did she woke up?
Good timing, perfect timing, and she woke up happy.
Can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Doug Marisak, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Judge, appreciate it. Did you want to get a picture of all four of them, the newly electeds? Do you want a picture of all four of the newly electeds, or we got that earlier?
Sure.
You want to? If you guys don't mind. Yeah.
Does the judge have to be from Kendall or Cape Cod?
Yeah. I look, I went to like, I went to school with from kindergarten, kindergarten, no, he's a judge in Chicago. I go, oh, damn, come on, swear us.
Is he a friend?
Yeah, that would be cool. Because I mean, anyone can do a swearing. It doesn't have to be a judge.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, no, it's not a requirement.
I'll keep that in mind for...
I mean, it's not a judge.
Thanks, sir. See you in a few years. Right? It goes well. All right, next up, I want to introduce the chief of police for the swearing in. Introduction for a police officer, Mario Magana. Is that right?
That's good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, it's my honor to introduce to the village of Montgomery our newest police officer that just graduated from the academy on February 28th. It's Mario A. Magana. Mario, come on up. Mario is originally from Aurora, Illinois. He's a graduate of Aurora Central Catholic. He got his associate's degree from Robonzi Community College, which by the way, he had the best criminal justice professor. Prior to that, he was an asset protection manager. He is joined tonight by his mother Lupe, his father Jaime, brothers Federico, Jaime and Mateo, sister Isabel. His interests are planning on continuing his education and create more opportunities in his career in law enforcement. He is going to have his wonderful girlfriend Jillian Griffin pin on his badge.
All right, perfect.
That makes sense. 10 years in the... Everyone has their right hand and repeat after me? I say my name. I, Mario Magana, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and that I will support the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer to the best of my ability.
All right, next up, in alphabetical order, trustee Guyer.
Can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Devin Guyer, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and that I will support the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee to the best of my ability.
All right, ready, one, two, three. Now, we're going to be courageous here. If we need to go to the middle, we have an entire panel.
Yes.
It's more fun down here. You can have some of you guys squeeze in behind, too. All right, can everybody see me? Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. Awesome. What's that? service officers, Colin Pradel and Isaiah Rodriguez.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. If I can have Colin come down. Colin, where you at? There you are. So Colin, he was born and raised in Naperville, go Redskins, graduated from Naperville North, that's a Husky school if you didn't know that. After high school, he took some continuing education classes, College of the Page, Triton College, moved to Aurora, and now is residing in Oswego with his girlfriend. His prior work history ranges from a tow truck operator, 911 dispatcher, law enforcement, emergency vehicle technician, where he built police and fire vehicles. Currently works full-time with the City of Aurora Emergency Management Agency. He started back there in 2016. In his free time, he likes to volunteer as well as mess around with a 3D printer. He loves spending time with his family, including all his nieces. He's very excited about being part of the village. He's joined here tonight with his girlfriend Samantha, his father George, his sisters Caitlin, Tanya, brother-in-law Sean, nieces Natalia, Brooklyn, Josenia, and Sadie. Did I say that right? All right, good. Welcome. Welcome, Colin.
Appreciate it.
In a minute, we'll get a picture. Hang on a second. All right, next one, because we want to do this all at once. Our next one is Isaiah Rodriguez. Isaiah, come down. Isaiah, who was originally Aurora, lived in Montgomery for a short time, but now him and his family settled in Yorkville. Isaiah graduated from Yorkville. He was a member of the IVEC program where he grew his interest in law enforcement. Isaiah enjoys sports with time off, especially baseball, basketball, football. He also enjoys weightlifting and watching movies with the family. In attendance tonight is his mother Monica, sister Melania, is that correct? Miliani, okay, I'm sorry. Gianni and Gianni's mother Kathy. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome Isaiah to our family.
Yep. Can I do this?
Yes.
Do you have the book on right here?
All right, ready, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Let's do Colin first.
Yep.
Hello, guys.
Junior, junior.
Yeah?
Calm down. Hey, all you guys over there, calm down, it's a photo. Hey, all the police officers supporting our brothers, calm down. Now, we worked up in the last one.
All right. All right, ready? One, two, three. Last one. All right, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Last one. One, two, three.
Don't move.
All right, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Last one. One, two, three.
Don't move.
All right, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Last one. All right. Good job. Congrats. All right, thank you both for coming. Police Department, thank you for your support, for your comrades. All right, move on to item D tonight is proclamation for Police Week of May 19th through the 20th. A read, well, May 9th through the 20th on the agenda, but it's really May 14th through the 20th, 2023. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Police Officers Memorial Day, and May 14th through May 20th as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the village of Montgomery play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the village of Montgomery, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of the law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression and intimidation. Whereas it is important that all citizens of Montgomery observe Monday, May 15th as Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Now therefore, as village president of the village of Montgomery, I call upon all citizens of Montgomery and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 14th through the 20th, 2023 as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Further, I direct that the flag of the United States be displayed at half-staff on all village government buildings on May 15th in conformance with the Violent Crime Control and Law Enforcement Act of 1994.
Move to approve.
All those in favor? I suppose. Eyes have it. Thank you. Picture?
Of course.
We're big on pictures.
Do you have comfort up? Do you have comfort up for all these families? Is he here? Okay. Should he have a lot to come from? I would like to take a better shot. You get my shirt? I think I work here. They took a lot. See? Sorry for the vantage. That's huge.
I have some of those stairs very little. Oh.
Do you want to hold the thing up?
I love the ears.
Yes. Can I have Chief, can you stand in the middle with him?
I love his Instagram, my daughter just loves, like, every time he comes up to him.
Can I have you two, like, one go behind and one go front?
Oh, really?
All right, here we go.
Yeah, they're so big, they stand up.
All right, cool. Everybody here, one, two, three. One, two, three. Last one. One, two, three. Awesome.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving on. Item E this evening is public hearing for SSA number 44, Alcott Road Truck Terminal. I will open the public hearing, and if there's any member of the public that is here tonight to present or provide questions or comments, now is your time. All right, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Move on to item F. It's the regular public comment, two-minute opportunity for any member to address us on any topic that's not related to anything. It's two minutes. State your address. All right, hearing none. Move on to the consent agenda and entertain a motion for approval. On the consent agenda, we have minutes of the April 24th Village Board meeting, accounts payable through May 8th of 2023, accounts receivable for April of 2023, the building report for April of 2023, water production report for April of 23, proclamation for Motorcycle Awareness Month in May, and a request for liquor license Class J, which is temporary, and a waiver of the liquor license fee for the Montgomery Foundation Street Eats Festival. So moved. Move in second. Go ahead and take the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
No.
I'm sorry, was that a no?
No.
Okay. And trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Matt carries five-one, thank you. So we need to vote on them all? Okay. So we're going to go back through and vote on all of these individually, okay? Because consent needs to be unanimous, I forgot about that. Item A is in minutes of the April 24th Board meeting. So moved. Second. Moved by Marisak. Second by Teresa. See how that works? Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes. Okay, item B is accounts payable through May 8th. So moved. Second.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
No.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes. Matt carries five-one, thank you. The next one is C, accounts receivable, April of 23. So moved. Second.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Matt carries five-one, thank you. So we need to vote on them all? Okay. So we're going to go back through and vote on all of these individually, okay? Because consent needs to be unanimous, I forgot about that. Item A is in minutes of the April 24th Board meeting. So moved. Second. Moved by Marisak. Second by Teresa. See how that works? Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes. Okay, item B is accounts payable through May 8th. So moved. Second.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
No.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes. Matt carries five-one, thank you. The next one is C, accounts receivable, April of 23. So moved. Second.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes. Sorry, guys. Item D, building report for 23. So moved. Second. Who did second? Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
And E is the water production report for April of 23. So moved. Second.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Okay, as I'm sure you all thought, there's a way better way to have done that, and we'll do that next time. Sorry about that. All right, moving on to the items for separate action, which should run much like the first. Item A is ordinance 2009, supplementing ordinance 2008 declaring personal property of the village surplus and authorizing its disposal. Waiver first, passage on the second. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Rowley. So last board meeting, the village board approved ordinance 2008. 2009 ordinance presented tonight is for an additional piece of equipment that was left off of that list. That is for the current chipping, tree chipper that will be replaced as part of the vehicle and equipment replacement program. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions? Motion? So moved. Second.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Okay, six-zero. Thank you. Item B is approval of the purchase of a Hyundai forklift from Midway Industrial in the amount of $35,842. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Rowley. So as part of the village's vehicle and equipment replacement program, we have identified the Public Works Department replacement for an existing forklift. Tonight, we are proposing approval to purchase this piece of equipment from Midway Industrial out of Sugar Grove in the amount of $35,842. This would be utilizing the village's Sourcewell membership as part of the procurement for this piece of equipment. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
I have a question. Is this currently in stock, and are there any lead time?
There's a lead time. The lead time right now is July, and we have our name on one of the units coming in.
What year is that?
July of this year.
Okay.
We're not, it's not a model 2021 or anything?
No.
Okay. Just messing with you, Mark.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Six-zero. And the last item is approval of an escrow, IGA with Dupage Water Commission, the amount of $200,000. Go ahead.
Thank you. DWC is currently evaluating proposals from engineering firms for the construction design engineering of the pipeline out here. The IGA with them and the three communities provides for us to provide escrow funding for the engineers. So this is an item we're aware of, it's in the current budget, so upon this, we would, they'll invoice us for $200,000 for our share of the engineering. Answer any questions?
So moved. Second.
What's the total budget amount of 762 versus the 200 that we're doing now? Are we working up to that?
Well, we have other items in that line item besides the 200,000 for the Lake Michigan project.
All right. And all of the agencies are approving their own agreement with DWC?
The other two communities have already approved at previous meetings.
Perfect. Okay. And we have cash on hand for this, but when we get closer to big-ticket items, we'll have more funding.
It'll still be included in the WIFIA program. We're going to track all the expenditures.
Perfect. Okay.
When do we expect that initial 600,000 to start being drawn down? And would there be an, is there a potential for an additional ask to fund that in the future as this project moves along?
There is the potential for an additional ask if the escrow gets too low. I don't know when they'd start spending down, what's, do you remember the timeline for when they're going to approve?
Yeah, the general timeline is we're having interviews next week to select, then the selected consultant will be submitting a scope and budget back to the DWC, and then I think it goes for consideration of their board in June. So I would say likely you wouldn't start to see any cost until July or August, depending on how quickly they initiate work. As soon as we have a defined scope and budget, we'll be able to respond better as to whether or not there's, it's beyond the $600 that was, or $600,000 that was originally estimated. So... As soon as we have a defined scope and budget, we'll be able to respond better as to whether or not there's, it's beyond the $600 that was, or $600,000 that was originally estimated. So, um, yeah, I think that's where we're at.
Thank you. Okay. I believe we had a motion in a second. Go ahead and call the roll.
Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bett singer?
Yeah.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Thank you. We don't have anything for discussion? Anything new or unfinished?
I do. So we held Arbor Day, as usual, it was a rainy day, but it was well-attended, really good time. And if you recall, at our last meeting at PAF, came in and talked about ArborNet. We submitted that application, it was approved, so now we're ArborNet Class 2 Arboretum for the village.
Very well-attended for being an awful day weather-wise. There was lots of people there, so, good work.
Top on top is May 19th. May 19th at Douglas Road and at the Gas and Wash on Orchard as well. So I know Ada sent out a request for volunteers, so if anybody's interested in helping out.
All right, you can see future meetings there. I would like to adjourn into executive session to discuss litigation which is filed and pending pursuant to 5ILCS 120 over 2C11, and then also to discuss the purchase or lease of real property. This is 5ILCS 120 over 2C5. So moved. Second. And this is to adjourn into executive session. So go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bett singer?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
And we're adjourned, thank you.